You could please rise. Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, divisible with liberty and justice for all. All right, so for those of you following along, I don't want, excuse me, I need to also mention that all members are participating remotely during this meeting due to the unprecedented time in the history of our Commonwealth and under the remote participation of public boards due to the emergency declaration order for the pandemic issued on March 12th, 2020. Every vote that we take, as you know, will be a roll call vote. And so apologies to the folks watching from home tonight, we have a little bit of a change. The agenda, our 7:00 PM public hearing is not going to take place as EverSource and Verizon have withdrawn their petition for the new poll work at 109 Robbins Road. They are going to be revisiting that plan, the scope of work, and then when they have the details sorted out, then they will come before us at that time. So between now and our 7:10 public hearing, we will skip down to the new business on our agenda, and as part of that new business is item number two, which is the vote to award bid contract for joint salt bid to Eastern Minerals for various salt treatments for winter weather. And we have, it looks like we have all the paperwork lined up there. I see Jim Johnson, we have the recommendation, do you have anything to add to that?
No, just the fact that I have Rick's on the call too. This is a joint bid that we do with Medfield, and I think it's a few other towns too. And we basically have a low bidder and a backup bid, excuse me, on this one. Rick's edited it, I've looked it over, pretty standard stuff, recommend favorable action on it.
Okay, thank you. Any further comment or questions from the board on this item?
I'll make a motion to avoid bid contract 2021-08 to Eastern Minerals for various salt treatments.
All right, I'll second that motion. We have a motion and a second. Being that there's no further discussion, we'll proceed to the roll call vote. First, we'll go to David Salvatore.
Aye.
Mark Gallivan.
Aye.
Jim O'Neill.
Aye.
And Ben, aye. 400, motion passes. Next, we will move to the item number four under new business, which is the vote to sign the contract agreements, which I believe these were the agreements from town meeting, Jim?
Yeah, so just more formality, the contracts are voted, we're going to get them signed and in place and on file with the clerk and everything. These are the contracts that your board voted on a while back in Town Meeting Act due on a week and a half ago. They're ready to go, they're actually going to file here in HR for the union presidents to come in and sign them, so everybody's been put on notice and they're ready to go. So, any questions, I'll take them.
Okay, is there any further questions or discussion from any of the board members?
Then Ben, I'll make a motion to sign the contract agreements for Town Hall clerical employees, public safety dispatchers, local 115 police, sorry, that's two different items, public safety dispatchers, local 115 police, library employees, firefighters association, Department of Public Works for the term of July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2023.
Second that. We have a motion and a second, being that there's no further discussion, we'll proceed to the roll call vote. David?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
And Ben, aye, 400, the contracts, agreements are approved.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. And why don't we keep going here to number five under new business, which is a vote to appoint Matt Lundston to the Town Forest Committee as an associate member. I know that Mr. Lundston is not able to join us tonight, but he had sent in his application, which was included in our packet. Is there any further comment or questions from the board members?
I'll make a motion to appoint Matt Lundston to the Town Forest Committee as an associate member.
And second? So we have a motion and a second, proceed with the roll call vote, David?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Ben, aye, 400, the motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Lundston, for giving your time to the town, we look forward to working with you on the Town Forest Committee. Item six under new business is a vote on the request of Barbara Davis to use Adams Farm Saturday, December 5th, from 11:00 to 5:00, for her family holiday gatherings. Excuse me, so the board has seen that there's a couple of pieces of information in there in the packet that speaks to this, and Jim Johnson, did you have anything else to add to the information in our packet, the Adams Farm application?
No, not at this time either, did you get anything additional?
No, so it's, everything is fine, you know, in terms of the numbers for the party, we are just waiting on approval from the fire department with regards to the fire pit, but they are happy to proceed with the party either way.
Okay, all right, so any motion will be subject to the requirements that are set forth in that, in that application, so that sounds good.
So I'll make a motion to approve request of Barbara Davis to use Adams Farm on Saturday, December 5th, 2020, from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM for family holiday gatherings, subject to them complying with all COVID-19 guidelines that are in place at the time of the event, and use of the fire pit is subject to final approval from the fire department closer to the events.
Second? So we have a motion and a second, we'll proceed to the roll call vote. David?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
And Ben, aye, 400, motion passes. All right, so we have two more minutes until the public hearing here, so we'll just move to, let's see, we have, hi Ashley, how are you?
Hi, doing well.
Good, good. So under item one under new business is a request of Ashley Clark, our community development director here in Walpole, hold a small business Saturday on the Town Common. All the information and diagrams and whatnot are in the packet, as well as additional comment from departments in the town. Is there any further, Ashley, if you could just maybe give us a one-minute summary of what you're looking to do and the folks you've talked to about this, that'd be great.
Yes, so I reached out to a few people involved with the Santos Parade to see if we can coordinate, they're not exactly sure, I think, what they're going to be doing given COVID restrictions and whatnot. I've spoken with Mark Romeo, the Chair of the EDC, who thought it was a great idea. I also reached out to all the departments, police, fire, health, and they're all on board with this, subject to, I'll schedule a meeting with everyone to just go over all the final details of what the plan is, and so basically the idea is to close Elm Street through the Shared Streets Grant, I was awarded about $15,000, and so have purchased some tables and chairs and roll out AstroTurf and some fun stuff to actually put out there so that it's more programmed, so people will actually enjoy using that space. We're hoping to get local businesses who might want to set up a table to talk to folks about what they do in town. It's really open to local artists as well, similar to what happened with Art on the Uncommon, and hoping to get someone to perform, there's a one-man band, I'm hoping will perform. So one person will, I think, meets Melissa's criteria, so it's kind of perfect.
Excellent, great, great, okay, well, thank you, Ashley, I appreciate you bringing this forward and giving a set explanation. I'll just go around to each member of the board here now, see if there's any additional questions or comments. David?
I have no questions or comments, well, I do, it'll be interesting to work with the church sometime and perhaps close Front Street, because that might provide some more space for you to like, having events as well, and you know, if the church is okay with us closing that road, it could provide some extra space and also be able to sort of use the grass space in the front of the church as well, so.
Great, thanks, David, Mark?
I think it's a great idea to get people together down on the sort of the uncommon or whatever you call it, little area, so I think it's a great idea.
Jim?
Yeah, I love the idea and very supportive of it.
Great, thank you, and I would echo everyone's comments on this, so thank you again, Ashley. I entertain a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the request of Ashley Clark to hold small business Saturday on the Town Common on November 28th, 2020, and approve the closure of a portion of Elm Street from the morning of November 28th and reopening on or before Saturday, November 29th.
And I'll second that. We have a motion and a second, being that there's no further discussion, we'll proceed with the roll call vote, David?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Ben, aye, 400, the motion passes. Thank you again, Ashley, good luck, and we'll look forward to seeing everyone down on the common.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, Ashley.
All right, and being that the time is now 7:12 PM, we'll proceed to the public hearing and vote request of EverSource, their grant location was installed approximately 80 feet of conduit on Main Street, 40-foot of conduit on Glenwood Ave for service to 979 Main Street.
I'll second that.
So we'll proceed with the roll call vote to open the public hearing. We have a motion and a second, David?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
And Ben, aye, 400, we are now in an open public hearing for the EverSource grant location was just described, so, hi Carl, I see that we have you on tonight, thanks for being with us, and Jim Johnson, do you want to kick this off here with a little bit of a description?
This is for the upgraded electrical service at 979 Main Street. I actually had to look that up myself, that was, that's the former site of the Bank of America across there, right on the Calm Ray, next to the first sandwich shop, and they're looking to move forward with this. Carl, I know you've worked on this one too, anything really to Adams?
No, Jim, it's about 80 feet of conduit in Main Street and about 40 on Glenwood Ave. If the board and yourself will remember, also conduit work for the Edgewood Project Liberty Station earlier in the year, and this will go alongside of that in, and so that's about, it's a new electric service for that building that was formerly Bank of America, which is going to get renovated into another use, and that's what the petition is for, and we've recommended approval.
Great, yep, and I see that we have the letter here from you, your office as well, Carl, recommending approval, so thank you for that and diving into the details of that. Is there any further discussion or questions from any of the board members?
And I think the owners of the property have asked Efer if they could be on, Efer, are they on this call, I see one random phone number here.
I'm not sure, I think that might be Chris Crosby from EverSource.
Okay. Chris, is that you?
Yes, it's Chris Crosby, yep.
Okay, so EverSource is on the call too, Ben?
Wonderful. All right, yeah, thank you for joining us tonight, why don't we just proceed through here if there's any further questions or discussion, David? Mark, do you have any further questions or discussion points on this?
The project looks good, the paperwork looked good.
Jim?
Just a quick question for Carl, the conduit on Main Street, how is that being installed? Are they ticking up the roadway?
Yeah, they're going to have to excavate the street and then do a repair trench along that trenchway.
And so obviously you don't have any concerns about that, I know Glenwood's already kind of torn up, so I assume that's going to be curb-to-curb, curb-to-curb covered at some point, but what are they going to do on Main Street with that trench?
They're going to do a trench repair, Main Street is just a little bit about, just at about the five-year end of its moratorium, so that's going to be a trench patch, and as we noted in our memorandum, we'll specify the details for doing that, matching the existing pavement and overlapping it and doing and sealing the joints, et cetera, we'll take care of that in the road opening. Glenwood will be a curb-to-curb, and there's definitely a sense of urgency to get this project coordinated with the other ones so that that road can be paved out all curb-to-curb. We've also noted that in our recommendation.
Great, thank you, Carl, I'm all set then.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Jim, and I know that I had mentioned this as well when we had discussed, as Carl brought up, the previous conduit work in Glenwood to take all those wires down underground, over the holes, really creates a lot of open space, more area for green space, more area for planting trees, so there certainly are, I think, need to go through development downtown, going to be additional opportunities to take those wires underground and improve the feel and the look of the downtown area, so it's a great thing for us for sure. So being that there's no further discussion, entertain a motion to...
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second? Thank you, we have a motion and a second, being that there's no further discussion, we will vote on closing the public hearing, David?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
And Ben, aye, 400, the public hearing is now closed.
I'll make a motion to approve the request of EverSource to install 80 plus or minus feet of conduit on Main Street and 40 feet plus or minus of conduit on Glenwood Avenue for service at 979 Main Street, subject to them complying with any conditions set out by the town engineer.
And I'll second that.
So we have a motion and a second, being that there's no further discussion, we'll proceed with the roll call vote. David?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
And Ben, aye, 400, the motion passes. Thank you, Carl, for being with us again tonight, have a good evening, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, moving on to the next item, we have Marilyn Thompson, Marilyn, we have you, oh, I see you there, Marilyn, hello, how are you? Thank you for being with us tonight, the Finance Director for the Town of Walpole, and we have a couple of votes here tonight that we're going to run through, but before we get to that, I do want to say briefly on behalf of myself, in a way Marilyn, we really appreciate your years of service to the town, and congratulations on your upcoming retirement, I know that you and I only had a short time to work together here, but certainly your fingerprints are all over what the town has done recently in helping with Jim Johnson and the board, what they're trying to do, so thank you so much for that, very much appreciated.
Thank you, you're welcome.
So as we move through here, we have the first item, Jim Johnson, you want to tell us a little bit here about what we have?
Yeah, this is some, just more or less just to clean up some of our old borrowing items, anything under $50,000, the select board's allowed to basically vote to, per chapter 44, section 20 of the Mass General laws, to, with the majority vote of the board, to take that off and basically apply it to some of the older debt borrowing. This is a small amount, I was actually hoping it was going to be a bigger amount, but after looking over everything, we've spent down a lot of these smaller accounts, so they consist of the underground oil storage tank removal from 2013, that's for about $3,200, the new police station design from 2005, that's a really old one, about $3,600 there, and the animal kennel from 2011 on West Street for about $1,500, so the total here is 83, sorry, about $8,400 here, and we're just asking the board to vote to authorize Marilyn to do this. Marilyn, did I miss anything on that?
Nope, you did great.
Great, is there, is any further questions or comment from the board? Being that there is none?
I'll make a motion to reappropriate the balances from completed borrowing articles as outlined by the Finance Director, and use the funds to pay down debt.
Second? We have a motion and a second, being that there's no further discussion, we'll proceed with the roll call vote. David?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
And Ben, aye, 400, the motion passes. Then we have a second item.
I can give an introduction if you'd like that.
Yeah, please, Jim.
Sure, this is a request for, to move $34,717 from an Eastland Circle borrowing that was appropriated in the Fall Town Meeting 2000, to be used to place towards the MWRA Phase 11 project that was borrowed, so more or less just taking some old borrowing that was already on the books and reapplying it to some new ones. Sewer and Water Commissioners took this up last month at their meeting, they voted favorable action on it, and we also wanted to run it through this board, just to make sure everything's crossed, all our I's, T's are crossed here, and we're in line with everything. Marilyn or Rick, did I miss anything on that one?
No, it's just a leftover proceeds from borrowing that needs to be used up.
Great, thank you. Any further questions or discussions from the board members?
I'll make a motion to reappropriate the balance from the Eastland Circle article of $34,717 and 63 cents, approve that the Fall Annual Town Meeting 2000, and use it to pay the debt service payment for the MWRA projects from the Fall Annual Town Meeting 2019.
Second? We have a motion and a second, being that there is no further discussion, we'll proceed with the roll call vote, David?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
And Ben, aye, 400, the motion passes. And then there is one other one here, I believe, Jim?
Sure, this is related to our other post-employment benefits, we have been talking with our actuary on this one, and one of the items they suggested where we could quickly shave a few million dollars off our liabilities, if we actually have, we took our plan from a few years ago from 2018, and actually put it in the select board's policies and procedures, so we took what we agreed to back in September 8th, September 28th, 2018, and basically put it into a policy here. He told me today, we probably shaved, we thought our liability was going to be about 55 million, this takes it down to just about 51 million, so just by putting this policy in place, we saved some money here on paper, and it's consistent with what we adopted back about two years ago, and it takes everything into consideration that we've already done to date. I'll take any questions, but Marilyn, anything else to add?
No, other than the bonding agencies look very favorable on an actual policy for OPEB, rather than just, you know, whatever we feel like each year, so it will look good for them.
Yeah, that's a great point, Marilyn, and that's why a lot of this is happening right before the select board tonight, is to improve that status, both our borrowing and our bond rating, which is a huge possible area for savings for the town, so it's just good business to take care of these items in this way. Any further questions or comments from the board?
If I may?
Yes, David?
So what, the policy lists percentages, what would that number look like? I don't want to say this year, because this year's, I think, made it a little less than previous year, but what would that number look like for last year?
So this year, I can speak to this year, because I remember breaking out the numbers, so it was going to be, if we stuck to this policy as part of our free cash, it would have been about $320,000, $330,000 of free cash would have gone towards, and I'm trying to find it here, I think we put 250 in all of that, is that right, Marilyn?
Yes, 250.
Yeah, that's fine, I, we, I know at that meeting we had discussed, some people said, well, we should just make it part of the budget, and I like the fact, I like the idea of the policy, but I also like the idea of having it as something like, for this, as a little bit of a rainy day fund, in a sense that you can, you know, if we need 50,000 or 100,000, we can lower it in a year like this year, so I think that works out well, and I'm glad that policy's in place, and hopefully we can be generous in some years, and this year clearly we, it was appropriate to skimp a little.
Thank you, David, any other comment from the board?
I'll make a motion to vote to approve the OPEB policy and add to the Town of Walpole Policies and Procedures Manual.
Second? We have a motion and a second. No further discussion from the board, we'll proceed with our roll call vote, David?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
And Ben, aye, the motion passes 400.
Ben, if I could just say one or two more things under OPEB, so with this, we're going to have the actuary, he'll let him know tomorrow that he can finalize it and submit it to us formally, so what I'd like to do, probably in November or December, is have him come before your board, I'd like to invite the Finance Committee, if the board's okay with it, so we can run through it with you folks, maybe start early or something, or at off night, because it is in-depth, I'm sure you're going to have a lot of questions about, I'm sure if Ben comes, he'll have a lot of questions, are you guys okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, all right, and again, thank you, Marilyn, for your seven-plus years of service here in Walpole, this is her last week, and the retirement is well-deserved, we're going to miss her, but she has a good team that she's put together down there, and looking forward to working with everyone.
Thank you, Jim.
I just also want to say thank you, Marilyn, for all that you've done for the Town of Walpole, you've done a great job, you've kept us on the straight and narrow, and I appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you, Mark.
And ditto that for me, thanks a lot, Marilyn, good luck.
Thank you.
Great.
Hey, Ben?
All right.
And if I could, and I'm remiss in doing this, but when we talked about the crisp entertainment license earlier?
We haven't talked about the crisp.
Oh, we haven't, okay, so we're still, okay, so we're still going to hit that, okay, thank you.
That's, that's coming up hot, yep.
Perfect, okay, then I wasn't remiss, I take it back.
Not yet, you're not remiss yet. Okay, moving on to the next appointment item here, we have Chief Carmichael, the Walpole Police Department, waiting here for the 7:30 appointment, how are you doing, Chief? Thanks for joining us this evening.
Doing great, thanks for having us, I have Officer Van Ness, Heather Van Ness behind me there, and Officer George Byrd, and also Chief Keller is over there too. So thanks for having us on tonight, I know we're going to speak a little bit about Longview when I think, get into the reverse alignment system a little bit, so.
Yeah, yeah, so just a bit of a preface to that, we had discussed with Chief Carmichael, the board had discussed with Chief Carmichael about having a discussion on Home for Little Wanderers, two of the members of the board, Jim O'Neill and David Salvatore, had attended the meeting with Chief Carmichael earlier this summer with the Home for Little Wanderers, you know, administrative staff, and so we just want to continue that conversation here, I know that Jim and David probably both have comments that they'd like to add to that, but Chief Carmichael, I know that you had provided to us a lot of information, data, charts that you have compiled, if you could maybe start off by walking through that and making some comments to kick off that discussion.
Yes, sure, Chief Keller did us the honor of creating some good statistics that we can look at, some tangible statistics, real quick, I just want to recognize Officer Van Ness and Officer Byrd, they are both of our liaisons for the Home for Little Wanderers in Walpole, and they just do such a tremendous job working with these kids, they're intimately aware of the situations that we deal with down there, and they spend vast amounts of time in engaging the staff and the kids down at Longview, and you know, they really understand, they have a lot of compassion for these kids, because they are, they are high-risk, and you know, they come from extremely difficult backgrounds, we all understand that, the safety of these children down there is our responsibility, and so Heather and George do a great job of engaging them and making sure that they create good, strong relationships with them, and believe me, it comes in very handy when there's a critical incident, and that child is familiar with our officers at the level that they are, so I can't express how important that is and how successful it's been on that front. So I can't, um, express how important that is and how successful it's been on that front. So statistically, we have, uh, we're actually less calls, uh, for twenty twenty as compared to where we were last year. Right now, we're at about two hundred and sixty-nine calls for service down at Longview. Last year around this time, we were at about two hundred and eighty-eight. Now, it's important to note that it's not, our, our main issues here aren't just the call volume and the resources that we expend down there. It's, it comes down to the, the public safety, the safety of the neighborhood, the safety of the kids and the staff. And frankly, uh, sometimes what we seem to be dealing with is, um, you know, the, the place where we're lacking is DCF, Department of Children, Families, and people who are responsible for the custody of these children down there. And we've, you know, we've actually compiled and looking at some of our statistics. As an example, this is what we kinda see where the problem is. One individual was there for six months and that generated thirty-one calls. Another individual was there for about fifteen months, generated eighty-four calls. Another individual, seven months, fifty-one calls. And another individual for one month, nineteen calls. And this is what we deal with a lot. We have the repeated issues coming over and over again. If you recall, uh, several years ago, um, in front of the board, we had a situation with arrests. We had multiple, I think we had seventeen or eighteen arrests at the Home for Little Wanderers, which we've really tried very hard to steer away from, um, and get away from that. But back then, um, what we found was that those seventeen arrests were really three or four people that were responsible for it. So it was multiple times, um, where those individuals were arrested. And the other big, um, kinda downfall we're dealing with, with DCF is they're very slow to put restrictions on them. The, the staff at Home for Little Wanderers, they do not have the authority to put restrictions on the kids. They are just basically under the umbrella of DCF. Um, but DCF technically has the custody, so they, they're overseeing them and they make all of the decisions. So when there's situations that happen at night or on weekends, um, where Officer Van Ness and Officer Byrd dealing with some situations, we're reaching out to DCF. We're filing fifty-one As, which are Abuse and Neglect Orders, uh, which very rarely, if ever, we ever hear back from DCF on those. And when we do hear back from them and they finally put restrictions on them, we've been dealing with these situations for so long that, um, there's just so much damage is done. But DCF does have the ability to put restrictions on, um, uh, you know, residents down there that, uh, like a one-to-one ratio, for example. So where there's typically a, a, a three-child to one adult ratio, um, maybe, you know, cut that down a little bit so that it's one-on-one, one counselor with that, um, with that child. There are some situations where restraints are required because, uh, you know, some of the kids may, uh, be severe special needs. Uh, they might be high-risk because of, um, the, the risk of, uh, sexual exploitation or something like that, uh, or just risk to themselves or others. So there's different situations. Every, every kid is different. One of the great things that, um, Heather and George did recently was getting the clinical notes so that before we go down there, the officers are very aware of what the background is of this particular individual that we're dealing with. So that, that helps us in our decision-making and how we handle a situation. But most recently, as the board knows, uh, it's been, uh, situations with runaways and where, um, you know, the policy is that if, uh, a kid runs away from Longview, if they're over the age of thirteen, uh, thirteen and older, uh, than that, they have a four-hour window. So, um, if they're under thirteen, they're always considered at risk. But if they're over thirteen, there's a four-hour window where Longview's not gonna notify us. And, um, the problem with that is if it is a kid that's at risk and there's no restrictions on them, in, in four hours, guess where they are? They're, they're back, they're on the train, they're in Boston. Um, they're subjected to other dangers and that type of thing. And I, I did share with the board a recent article, um, that demonstrated a, a young girl from Home for Little Wanderers was, was assaulted and stabbed in Boston, um, as a runaway. And this is my worst nightmare. Like, we just don't wanna see this happen. And the board's been great, Jim has been great. You know, I know all of you have, at, at some point, sat down with us with, uh, Leslie Suggs, CEO of, um, Home for Little Wanderers at one point or another, or Rebecca Reed, the director down there. And we're always, we're trying to work, um, towards a common goal here, which is, is very good. But, you know, the system, the system itself is still what's failing these kids. And as you know, we've gone all the way to the governor, filed letters with the governor, with the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security, um, with, uh, with DCF themselves. Uh, now, uh, Health and Human Services is involved at this point, so they're trying to work with DCF to help us with this problem. Uh, so there's a lot of people at the table here, but we're really not there yet as far as getting, um, solid solutions.
Okay. Well, thank, thank you for that, Chief, and I know that, uh, a lot of that information is, um, or, or our items that the board has heard before, but maybe have not been discussed, uh, in a public setting. So I'm, I'm glad that we're doing it here. Before we get into a specific discussion about, um, you know, action items or, or how the board can get involved, the town can get involved, uh, in this situation, I would like to hear more from, from Jim O'Neil and from David, if they would like, uh, on the meeting that they, they took part in and where they see, um, their comments are, um, you know, from that meeting and from the development of the situation over the summer.
Actually, Jim was so right on that.
Oh, he was, okay, I'm sorry. Thank you, David, for, uh, for the correction there. Jim O'Neil, would you like to add to the comments here?
Yeah, so I've, I've attended two of these meetings so far and there's been good representation from all the parties involved and all the right things get said, but the problem is all those right things don't turn into action. There are, you know, pseudo-commitments made about solving the problem and putting additional resources, bringing additional resources to bear on the kids. At one point, they were telling us that they would be able to, you know, keep the kids in the buildings and that wasn't gonna be a problem. But, you know, this is just, has been ongoing and we hear from the chief all the time about the issues that are happening up there. Now, let me just take a step back and say, I, I am a hundred percent supportive of what they're doing at the Longview Farm and the Home for Little Wanderers. And so, so, and I think our town should be very pleased that we are trying to help out the way we're helping up. These, these kids really do need help and they're not gonna get that help just anywhere. And so organizations like the Home for Little Wanderers are, you know, made up of a whole bunch of really special people who are devoting their time and, and effort and, you know, they're getting paid for it, obviously, but not a lot, I can tell you that. And they're, and they're, they're trying to do the best they can for these kids. And, and yet, we find ourselves in a situation here where we're putting a lot of people at risk, not the least of which are the kids themselves. You know, they are, that because of the things that occur, with people disappearing and, you know, running into the woods and down by the train tracks, the, the fighting that happens. Kids are at risk, the staff is at risk, our police officers are at risk. We're up there all the time, you know, Chief, if you say we're, we're down year over year, you know, by twenty trips up there, I guess, or something like that, this year to last, it's still two hundred and sixty-nine, I think was the number you quoted, two hundred and sixty-nine trips that we've made to the, to Longview Farm this year. That's a lot of trips. So I've, I've been in the two meetings, I've heard all the commitments and, and I believe when the people who are, who are, excuse me, I'm just gonna make this go away. I believe the people who are, um, who are talking to us are very well-intended and, and mean what they say. I think the problem is they're not empowered. They're not actually able to follow through on the things that they are trying to commit to us. And Chief, and you said it well a minute ago, that these, these kids are really in the custody of, of DCF, not the, you know, the Longview Farm per se. And, and so really the challenge that I think we have is with the state. You know, I, I believe if the state provided stronger support to the staff at the home, I think we'd be getting different outcomes. So a good play, a, a, it's good, a good thing we're doing there, a hundred percent supportive of it, but we have a problem and that problem is going to result in someone getting hurt. And I don't know that we can just, and I, and I'm not saying stand back, 'cause we don't stand back. We, we do a lot. In fact, we've committed a ton of resources up there and the meetings and all this stuff, so we've tried and tried and tried. But my feeling is that what we've done so far hasn't, for whatever reason, it hasn't worked. And so what I'm, what I'm starting to think is that, you know, I'd love to hear other points of view on this, but that it's time for us to be sending a letter from the board to the governor directly and, and laying this out and saying, look, we would really like to have a sit-down with you, Governor Baker, and talk about this situation before we get to the point where someone actually does get hurt. And bear in mind, when, when we've, when we're making those two hundred and sixty-nine trips up to the farm every year, we're pulling resources from other parts of the town. And, you know, it's, it's not unusual that searches have to be undertaken, canine units, helicopters, all kinds of stuff starts to happen. And when we're, when we're pulling resources from other parts of the town, that means other parts of the town are exposed. So we have to get that in mind too. You know, the chief is trying to protect the entire town. And, you know, obviously we'd wanna do our best by the Home for Little Wanderers, but we, we've got to take care of the town too. So, uh, uh, you know, I, in my heart of hearts, I, I think we really need to be taking an, an incremental step here. And, and I would love to see us send a, a letter to the governor and ask for that sit-down so we can explain to him what it is that we're experiencing firsthand here and try to come to some kind of a reasonable solution, one that, that meets the needs of those kids, but also meets the needs of, of our town. And I'll, I'll stop there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jim, knowing, and we appreciate you taking part in those meetings as well, you know, as a member of the board to bring that back to us. David, I'd like to go to you next for discussion and comment, please.
Yeah, I mean, clearly it's a, it's a problem with the population. It's a problem that's bigger than the Town of Walpole. I think it's, you know, in this environment right now, it seems like everybody, these things get left on the back burner and no one's focusing on them. They're focusing on other things. I think at some point, you know, you know, you know, we've had over the last few years, you know, Me Too was a big thing for a while, Me Too goes away, uh, you know, um, you know, and then, you know, something else comes into its place, Black Lives Matter pops up. At some point, hopefully, people will be saying, what are we doing with these kids? Why, you know, we have a whole group, a whole segment of our society that's n-not being well-served. And, you know, we, hopefully, you know, the mindset comes back to, hey, we need to get, take care of these people, these kids now, before horrible thing, you know. The, some of the things that these kids experienced, you know, are just so hard to overcome. And, um, you know, we really need to, to refocus energies and, and, you know, have people willing to invest in the, the, to, to resolve these issues. Um, I did have a question for the chief. Um, I know the cl, the home was closed for a while, then it came back and I think it was at half-capacity. As the capacity started to creep back up, um, what's going on there, do we know?
So at one point, you're right, sir, uh, at one point, there was about forty residents that lived up there. There was forty, another forty in the school, so about eighty total during the day. And, um, they, they, they closed down for a while and they basically reconfigured their model. If you recall before, there were kids as young as five years old down there. It was co-ed. Uh, it was much different, um, kinda mix of kids. I think the youngest that they have down there now is about twelve or thirteen. Uh, and they, I think just about twenty-five or twenty-six, uh, residents that are down there now. We did have the addition this year with the COVID house, uh, with the, the Duggan House, which is across the street, where, um, you know, kids that were in DCF custody would be placed at that, that home there. But that's about where they are right now, is about, uh, twenty-six.
Well, twenty-six people in all those calls, it's, you know, I, clearly it's a population that, you know, it's tough and, you know. It's, like I said, I, I just don't know how we, you know. We, we can only do so much and I think people just need to, at some point, it needs to become the big issue and, and then people will do something about it. But right now, there's so much that, you know, the state's not focusing on it. And it always seems like DCY, Departments of Children, Youth and Children all over the country, you know, they have to get to a crisis before people really address them. And, you know, I hope it doesn't get to that point. Um, and I hope we can, you know, shake some trees or get some people to pay attention before it becomes a big crisis. Thanks for all you guys are doing. Thanks to the officers and, uh, good job, Deputy Chief, uh, putting up those stats together. Thank you.
Yeah, and we agree with that because there, you know, we have, we're not gonna get into all the situations and the, you know, the, the, uh, some of the bad things that have happened and, and, and the, you know, the behind-the-story story. But, um, you know, we've had situations where we've had to track a kid all the way down to Florida. The last, had, just over the past couple of weeks, we've had to track the same kid all over Boston and in Somerville. We were pinging his phone, we found him in Somerville one night, another night we found him down on the waterfront in Boston. Um, and, and, you know, this kid's also associated, you know, associate with a gang. And so, uh, he's at risk and he's, and he's out there and we're spending all these resources to find him. These officers behind me, hours and hours, uh, looking for them and, and, and following up to try and get them back. And it's, it's incredible that, you know, they're placing calls to their caretaker, to the DCF, uh, caseworker and we're not get, we're not even getting calls back. We file fifty-one As because in our view, a fifty-one A Abuse or Neglect, um, complaint is filed with DCF, but it's for abuse and neglect and neglect includes failure to supervise them. And that's what we run into a lot, where kids that should be better supervised aren't being supervised. And Mr. O'Neil hit it right on the head. They're not, part of that problem is they're not empowered to. They're, they're only following DCF policy and what DCF is dictating to them. And DCF calls all the shots with them. So like I said, with restrictions, if they're gonna have a one-to-one ratio, if they're gonna, um, place them at as high risk so that, uh, it can be a restraint type of a situation or even transferring them from one facility to another facility, all lies with DCF. And the, the people, uh, the hard-working staff down at, um, Home for Little Wanderers here in Walpole, they don't have the authority to do all that and, and that's really where we're running down. And, and, and as Mr. Salvatore said, the problem is at the state level, this is bigger than Walpole. And, uh, you know, we have tried to engage all those people, the governor, and the governor did respond right away when I, when I sent him the letter. He responded right away. He got Executive Office of Public Safety and Security involved. They got Health and Human Services involved. Um, we, we also sent the letter, uh, right to Commissioner Spears at DCF and Deputy Commissioner, uh, Roddy. So they, they're all very aware of what we're dealing with here in Walpole. But the, uh, it's, it's, you know, we're not getting a whole lot of response back.
Real sad thing is probably your officers are the only people really looking for them. They don't have family looking for them. They don't have other people. I mean, these, these kids are just kinda out there on their own and that's the real sad part.
You're, sometimes you're right. That's exactly right. And, you know, with the law, as far as the law is concerned, you know, DCF really doesn't have to do a whole lot. We do. If, once a person is reported missing to the police department, we immediately have to, to act on it. We don't, you know, but you've seen us on the movies and stuff, they were, oh, you gotta wait twenty-four hours. No, when we're, somebody reports a missing person, you know, we're right on top of it. We go down, we take the report, we enter, we have all that person's data, we add them into the central registry, which is the, um, Criminal Justice Information Services, where and other law enforcement comes across them anywhere in the country, that they're gonna come up as missing or endangered. And then we have to actually actively engage in looking for them. And so that's why you see us down there a lot, when as soon as a kid's, um, determined to be missing, we have a perimeter set up. We've had the drone up, we have dogs out there. We, we, we're out there searching for hours on end at, at some times. And, um, and then if, that we don't locate them, then it transfers to wherever they, they may reside, whether it be in Boston or Worcester, wherever they're from originally. Uh, and that's where, now it starts to extend out across the state. And that's a lot of resources for us and as the board knows. just this past weekend, we were up there several times. And in the interim, as we're conducting active searches, we're getting critical incident calls around the other parts of the town, where we had to break free, very serious calls, and, you know, basically go halfway or almost all the way across town to get to those other calls. And, you know, that's where we're shortchanging the rest of the community because we just were so stretched thin down there.
Yeah, thanks, Chief. Thank you, David. You know, I think we've come up with some really excellent points here, some really, you know, excellent action items that can be put into a letter, as Jimmy suggested. So, Mark, you go ahead as well?
Yeah, I would say, Jim, thanks for going to those meetings. You know, we've all been involved in Longview Farm at some point. I think the letter is a good idea. I think it's important for us to do everything we can for these kids. They're coming out of bad situations. And when they run away, they're in a really bad situation at that point. I do want to thank the officers who have spent hundreds and hundreds of hours either over there or trying to track down, you know, kids who have run away or kids who have needed help. And really do appreciate the compassion that they show. Because, you know, these are, in the end, these are kids, and they need help. And, you know, we really need HHS and DCF to step up and help provide the guidance and help that each individual child or kid needs to hopefully improve their lives. So I'm all in favor of the letter and hopefully try to get something new going there.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mark. So I think the right way to proceed is, as we said, we can pull this letter together, you know, from the board offline. Chief, I think it'd be great, obviously, to not only have your input on that, but also have it possibly be a joint letter from the board and the department, and we can kind of talk offline about all the different ways we can do this. And also get officers, Van Ness and Birds, input as well. And I think that there's a lot we have to say based on this discussion, not only about DCF and the operations and administration of the state, also about, you know, Walpole's ability to react to these incidents and also keep our town safe. So I appreciate you coming before us on that. Do you have anything else to add here, Chief, before we move on to the next item?
No, thank you. And what I can do, too, is we've all been in communication here, obviously, but I can send the board the letter that we did send to DCF and to the governor and maybe make any necessary changes within that letter. You're welcome to use whatever you want out of that.
Yeah, I think as a starting point, that would be great. I'd appreciate that. And also, it's probably something that we'll reference. And to the extent that we can reference other documents from the data that Deputy Chief Callahan compiled, some statements from officers that have dealt with some of these situations. I think all of that is very compelling. It's all pieces that then make this larger discussion, as David alluded to, and it's by bringing in all the facets of this into the conversation, into this letter, that then we can get people's understanding of how big the problem is, even beyond Walpole. So thank you again for that. So we'll move on briefly to the last part of the discussion here with the chief, which is the reverse 911 system, how it's utilized by the department. This is something that I had asked the chief to come in and talk about very briefly. I had had some discussions with the chief about the reverse 911 system and how it's utilized in Walpole, the pluses and minuses of this system. And talking about, you know, critical incident response in our town and how residents can be aware of these situations and react accordingly is so critical. So Chief, if you could just give us a very brief summary of the reverse 911 system in Walpole, what it's intended to do and what it does, and we can go from there.
Sure. Thank you. Our officers are gonna, they're excused. Thank you. So what, we've had this discussion in the past, but I know we've recently discussed it, too, following an incident recently that took place in Franklin. It was a critical incident involving a emotionally disturbed person, suicidal ideation type of call. Shots fired. Franklin Police Department, as well as Metro ELEC, responded to that scene, including a couple of Walpole officers, to which I'd be remiss if I didn't mention Officer Crown and Haber, who were there, who were in the Bearcat that did take on fire that day. And Officer Crown was actually the one who deployed the less lethal 40 millimeter and ended up unarming the person, and they took him into custody without any incident. So they, law enforcement-wise, critical incident-wise, they did a great job there. You know, looking at the after-action review, the biggest problem was the reverse 911 system. And we've also had the same problem here in Walpole. Walpole has what's called SWIFT Reach, and that's the reverse 911 system that we use. The SWIFT Reach system is an opt-in type of system. So what that means is if you have a home phone, the system is automatically going to send you any messages, critical incidents, whether it be from the police department, the fire department, town hall, superintendent's office. And so those calls generated will go to those home phones. If you have a cell phone, you would have to opt into that system. So you'd have to go online, go into the town's website, and you'd have to create your account and basically activate your cell phone so that you would receive those messages. Many times, we've done educational awareness in the community, just to remind people of that. Usually, when it comes up again, is after a critical incident. And the people that didn't receive the messages will let us know that they didn't get it, for whatever reason. And, you know, the system is geofenced. So, you know, say it's an incident in East Walpole that's contained there. It might just be, you know, an East Walpole type of thing. Or if it's a townwide situation, we would go townwide. The problem that happened in Franklin was that they sent the system out through their reverse 911. It didn't get to all of the people who did not opt in. And so then that started a lot of conversation about what's going on, we're not being notified of this critical incident. And so the Metro ELEC command post notified MIMA. And MIMA put an alert out through, it's called the IPAS system, which is a national-based emergency management system. And the way that works, it's similar to the way that SWIFT Reach works, except it expanded out further. And what they think is that some people have phones that are already automatically tied into IPAS, and other phones could have just got the relay off of, you know, the cell tower. And so some people, even here in Walpole, got the reverse 911 call from Franklin. And so there was, you know, some type of a glitch. I'm definitely not the most tech-savvy person around, but admittedly. But that's kind of the gist of what they believe happened. And so the big message is, you know, to our Walpole residents, is that we do have SWIFT Reach, we have reverse 911. You must go on and opt in to use that if you have a cell phone, if you want to get it through email or text message. You can do all of that right online. And it's pretty easy. I did it myself. It wasn't too bad. So, and that's really everything in a nutshell.
Yeah. Yeah, for sure. So I appreciate that, Chief. You can get that information on the town website. There's a link on Walpole Police Department's website as well, where you can get to SWIFT 911 and put in your cellular information so that you can receive those notices. I myself received a notice, which is part of the impetus for this conversation, for the Franklin incident. And I'm almost in Medfield. So I'm one of the folks in Walpole who's furthest away from the incident and doesn't need to have that sort of a notice. And I know that we had another incident in East Walpole earlier this year, where, you know, there were certainly folks who had not opted in to get the notice, but folks that had maybe received incorrect notices in the past weren't as, weren't as active in monitoring that and then adhering to it as possible. In this day and age, it seems like something that we ought to be able to. I know it's, it's very technical in one respect, but really, it's fairly simple, right? It's just a warning system that goes through cell phones. And if folks can opt in, and we can try to get as many people to opt in as possible, as long as the accuracy of the system isn't in question, then we can keep a lot of people safe. And it's an issue that really, in some respects, is similar to the Home for Little Wanderers insofar as, well, there haven't really been any issues yet, but if there is, it's going to be a huge one. And so I guess my follow-up question to that is, what, if anything, can the select board of Walpole do to bring more attention to this? Is it at county level? I know you had mentioned the sheriff's office. Or does it have more to do with the state and, you know, my emergency preparedness?
So the first thing is training, right? So whenever we're talking about preparedness, if we don't train, we're not going to be prepared. So training is obviously very important. So even, I think it was the incident we had up on Common Street a couple of years ago, we did a reverse 911. We get a lot of feedback that people didn't get that message, and it was a very serious incident. And so we started to do another campaign, you know, to make people aware of it, get that information out there so that people logged in. So after that incident, we also retrained all of our dispatches. Because most of the time, if it happens, if it's police or fire, we're going to put that message out through our combined police and fire dispatches. And the system is, it's a great system. The problem is, is if you miss one check mark in the kind of matrix as you're going down through it, if you miss one thing, that can throw everything off. So it's really, it's like checks and bounds. You're going to go down. You're going to make sure that everything that fits for the message that you're sending. And, you know, a lot of times, we are, you know, honestly, we're trying to send it out so quickly, and, you know, the officers out in the street are still on scene. We're trying to get it out quick as possible so that people know what's going on, especially if it was like a shelter-in-place order, which, like, happened in Franklin. So training's a big thing. And I did, I did like the Code Red system that Norfolk County Sheriff's Department offered. You know, I have approached the sheriff about this in the past. They had to cut it a couple of years ago because it was very expensive. It was about $250,000 a year. But for police purposes, our dispatches are already so bogged down with critical incidents when they're going on. Police and fire might be bogged down. And we were able to just call the sheriff's department, and they would do it for us. They would put all the messaging out. And the system worked very well. I can't remember any time we had a problem with it, other than maybe, you know, it might have been an early morning call where some people were awoken and didn't appreciate that. But for the most part, it worked very well, but it's very expensive. Here in Walpole, I think we just need to, you know, the board and everybody, we just need to keep putting the awareness out there, just public awareness, that this is what you have to do. You've got to go on there, sign up, make sure your cell phone's on. If you want to get a text message, make a text message or email or whatever. And that's what we can do.
Yeah, for sure. And is it because the sheriff's system was down or is no longer operational that they went directly to the state, to MIMA? I mean, is that just the logical next step for any local department at this point?
Yeah, so I think, yeah, once Franklin PD put their reverse 911 call, they got flooded with, apparently, with people that didn't get the call. And they see that this critical incident's going on, and people are kind of like, you know, what's going on over there? So that's when they put the call to the command post to notify MIMA and put out the same message through IPAS to a different system. And essentially, it just went much broader than the call itself, so. Like I said, when we use it sometimes, you know, there's been times when we just made it specific to East Walpole or, you know, specific to a certain area. And other times, it's statewide.
Right, right, right. Okay, very good. Well, thank you for that description, Chief, and I hope that that gives people a little a little better idea of why they may have received that from Franklin before, why they may not have received them in the past. And I think, as you said, definitely continue keeping that at the forefront of people's minds so that they can sign up. Everybody has a cell phone these days. I know that with the various apps, SWIFT 911 actually has an app you can have on your phone that improves the accuracy of the warnings. So thank you for that. Any other questions or discussion from the board members for the chief in regards to this? Great. Okay, thank you, Chief, again, for being realist. I appreciate all that information. And we'll be catching up here in the near future about the Home for Little Wanderers and putting that letter together. So thank you.
Thanks very much.
All right. Moving on, we have the Metropolitan Area Planning Council interview and vote for appointment. We have a couple of individuals, Glenn Mathie and Paul Connelly, who have joined us, who have applied to this. Jim Johnson, I think you had received a letter from MAPC, the Metropolitan Area Planning Council, in regards to this. Maybe you could give us just a little bit of background as to why they reached out and what brought us to where we are?
Yes, they're just basically asking for Walpole to appoint a representative. I can't recall who our last one is. I think it might have been, I think it might have been John Charbonneau. And they were asking for a representative. It's been a little bit of time. We posted it online. Glenn submitted it, and so did Paul. And I'd like to recommend that you board interview both of these individuals and also appoint Ashley Clark as the alternate chair. So I'll take any questions.
Great, thank you. So.
Thank you. So.
We still have an echo here?
We still have an echo here.
Anybody else have an echo?
I had an echo.
Oh, you did? Okay. Thanks, Jim. All right. Sometimes I think I'm hearing Zoom ghosts by this time of the day, if I've been on Zoom long enough, any of us. So it's like, does that really happen or not? Great. All right, well, we have Glenn Mathie listed here first. So why don't we start with you, Mr. Mathie? Thanks for joining us this evening. It's good to see you again.
Good to see you, too.
So we all had the application that you filled out. If you could just say a brief bit about yourself and why you'd like to be, you know, on the appointment for the MAPC.
Yeah, good evening. Thanks for having me here tonight. The MAPC is something that I have taken an increased interest in lately. I can start a little bit with my experience. Actually, I'll say first that I don't have any planning experience. So if there are other people out there with planning experience, they should certainly be considered. But what I do have is a high interest in, unusually high interest, in how communities are designed and how they can operate efficiently. And I have a passion for taking ideas, innovative ideas, and I like to take them to the finish line. So the MAPC is a pretty cool organization. I've been working with them over the past year on the open space and recreation plan that we revised, me and many others throughout the town, over a dozen of us. But I was on the committee. And so I really got to know, you know, a couple planners within the MAPC through that effort, also through another effort to extend a rail trail up to the 1A ballfields. They would actually begin at the, you know, at the fields and extend all the way to Adabo. So that's a pretty cool effort that the MAPC has been working with our group on. So, you know, what I like the most about the MAPC is, I kind of, well, it's their mission to promote smart growth and regional collaboration. So it's not just what we do here in Walpole, but it expands beyond our borders. So that's kind of fun. Like, you know, I don't want to be in a bubble or a vacuum. I kind of want to take whatever we're doing and expand it throughout the region. And these guys are some of the smartest people in government, the people that I've met. So it's been a lot of fun working with them. They have really cool ideas. There's an idea to take the train tracks, the active train line that runs through the Walpole station, and actually create a parallel rail trail. I mean, you look at it, you say, okay, how do you use that? It's a train. You hop on the train, you go to Boston, maybe you go to Gillette. They're actually talking about, obviously, perimeter fencing to separate the active train line, but creating a rail trail next to the train tracks. And I can picture, you know, walking to Walpole Center and hopping on my bike and riding to Gillette Stadium or heading into Medfield on the freight line. It's not to say that that idea was far along in progression. It's probably not going to happen anytime soon, but it's an idea that they're talking about. And I would love to be involved in cool stuff like that. I think it's going to take, the MAPC rep is going to take on increased importance if you guys go forward with your master plan revision in the next year or whenever you end up doing it, the open space and rec plan, the downtown development. I just think it has an important role in Walpole's near future.
Great. Great. Thank you, Glenn. I appreciate that. Any questions from the board for Glenn? Yes, Jim, please.
Not a question, just a comment. First of all, I totally agree, Glenn, with your perspective on the need for us to be involved here. And I like some of the thinking that you've got going on. But more importantly, I wanted to just thank you for being willing to volunteer and bring your expertise into this, and look forward to working with you. So thanks very much for volunteering.
Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Glenn. All right. And we also have Mr. Connelly on? Hello, Mr. Connelly. How are you?
Hello, Mr. Connelly. How are you? Thanks for joining us. I apologize upfront for my voice. I'm fighting a cold. So if it's difficult to hear me, I'm sorry. I, you know, frankly, I'd like to echo what Glenn said. I think he really put it well and it's clear. He's already deeply involved. I've had experience with MAPC in another lifetime, you know, mostly when I worked at the state level, working with MAPC. And I echo his comments that it's a very bright, very thoughtful. working with MAPC, and I echo his comments that it's a very bright, very thoughtful group of individuals who really take great care and trying to foster, you know, collaboration and communication across communities for, you know, really kind of forward-thinking, forward-thinking projects. I threw my hat in the ring, I'm a second-term RPM, and just, I saw the opportunity and really thought it was a great opportunity to get more involved in Walpole. And I think, again, to echo what Glenn said, a lot of the best solutions that we will, you know, be looking at in the future do not end at Walpole borders, right? There's a lot of regional collaboration, regional work that benefits us as well as us being at Walpole, being able to take advantage of programs and thinking and extending those from our neighboring towns to make sure that we can bring the amenities. I hadn't heard anything about that rail trail, but Glenn, you got me excited already thinking about that. Those are exactly the type of things that bring value to the community, that we want people to be thinking about, that we wanna try and still, and that was, those are exactly the kind of reasons, you know, I put my application in consideration.
Great, great, thank you, thank you, Mr. Connolly.
Thank you, Mr. Connolly.
To Shannon.
To Shannon.
Yes, Glenn.
Make a quick comment.
Make a quick comment.
Yes.
So it comes to me like Paul would really have put a great asset to this. I'd be happy to help him the way I can.
I'd be happy to help him the way I can, but.
Paul gets the position, it's obviously up to the select vote, but if Paul does this, it's Paul, it's Ashley, and you and my other votes.
You and my other vote.
And I just wanted to make that point, that Paul sounds like he'd be really good for the job. I mean, I'd be happy to do it as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Glenn.
Sure.
Thank you. Any, does the board have any further questions for Mr. Connolly? Okay, being that there's no further questions or discussions, are to entertain a motion?
Look, could I, all I got was reverb when Glenn was talking. Glenn, could you sum that up for like, in less than a minute, just so?
The second piece.
Benefit of whatever you were saying?
The second piece there.
Yeah, and hopefully there's no reverb this time.
No, you're good.
All right, great. No, I was just making the point that Paul sounds like he's really interested in being involved. He already is involved in some level. I feel like it wouldn't take away from my ability to work with the MAPC if Paul got the position, and I wouldn't wanna take away from his interest. So I feel like I could work alongside him. And it's up to the board, obviously, it's whatever your pleasure is, but it sounds like Paul would be really good for the job.
Thank you, Glenn. All right, entertain a motion?
I think Paul wanted to speak.
Oh, Paul, one more time, yes, go ahead, go ahead, Paul, you're muted.
If, you know, in the interest of collaboration, I also wanted to echo what Glenn said. You know, likewise, if I don't get the position, I think the town would be really well saved with Glenn. And I also, I wanna say, Glenn, if I'm not wrong, I think I just read about your actions with the solar farm. And I wanna, you know, it says at the forum, but I'm gonna take it anyway, I don't wanna congratulate you on that. I think you have some really good thoughts, and I think that's exactly the type of thinking he needed to tell, so just wanted to echo.
Thank you. All right. Any, any motion from the board?
I think David wanted to talk too, then I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I just, I seek Glenn's energy and he will, I know he will involve himself. And I'm kinda leaning towards Mr. Connolly in that he's a new face, at least for me. And I, I think, you know, and I just wanna ask, what was the idea behind having Ashley as the alternate? Why don't we just do the other person as the alternate? And they, they can share the materials and, you know, stay involved and, you know.
Sure, sure, so I could turn it over to Jim Johnson, but I know that from looking at this myself and the work that Ashley and Glenn have already done and other projects with the MAPC, it really helps to have somebody from the town be in the loop as well. So certainly, we could have a whole slew of folks be involved. But it's important to have our community development director be integrated into that group as well. Jim, did you have anything to add to that?
No, you hit the nail on the head. I just more or less recommending this to have someone as staff support here to be able to follow up on some things.
So I'll drop in real quick and then I'll make a motion. I think Paul and Glenn, you know, if you guys can agree to work together, no matter how it works out, that would be awesome. I think it's always hard for us when two great people apply that we have to pick somebody. And I appreciate you both applying, and I'll make a motion to appoint Paul Connolly as Walpole's representative to MAPC for a three-year term, and appoint Ashley Clark as the MAPC alternate. Under the sort of understanding that, Glenn, you're gonna work with Paul sort of all along the way, so thanks for doing that.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion, and a second, we'll proceed to the roll call vote. David?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
And Ben, aye, the motion passes four zero zero. So thank you both again very much for all that you're doing for the town now and all you will be doing for the town, working with the MAPC. So I'm sure we'll talk to you again soon. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I have a quick question.
I have a quick question.
Yes, David?
Yes, David.
So, Mr. Johnson, how much do we contribute to this organization?
You got me on that one, David. Can I track that down and get it to the board?
Yeah, I was just curious, as I was reading how they were funded, I just, it's some kind of per capita number, I guess, so.
I feel like it's seventy-five hundred, but it's, let me get you a specific on that one.
That's all, okay. All right, so it's in the ten to twenty thousand dollar range, not?
Yeah.
Hundred, okay, that's fine, that's a good enough answer. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, David, thank you, Jim. And moving on now, under new business, item number three, vote request of CRISP for a weekday Sunday entertainment license. And I believe Mr. Carnes is on with us here. And there he is, all right. Thank you for, good evening, good evening, thank you for being with us, thank you for hanging on here through the entire meeting. I know that you're a busy fella. So Jim Johnson, could you kick us off on this here and walk us through? I see that we have Mike Yanovich as well.
This is a result of the bylaw that was passed about a week and a half ago at town meeting. Rob's been all over this, he's been supportive of it. He's worked with the building department and Ashley on it. So he's the first to middle, he knows it's basically, he can do it. If the state were to reject the bylaw, which I don't think that will happen, we'll have to go back to the zoning board on this one, but it's allowed, it's our first one here. I know he's been working closely with Mike and the fire department and everything to make sure all the codes are met. Mike, for the most part, do you have anything to weigh in on?
No, I'll just add, you know, we had our first meeting, we'll call it site plan recommendation committee, because it's not really a site plan review. And as I said at town meeting, we've kinda had, you know, we were thrust into this with the outdoor seating and the reviews and whatnot. So we've had a bit of a dress rehearsal, and it was good to get everybody together. So just way of background, this process will happen for all new applications. We'll get all the department heads together and conduct this review and make recommendations. Subsequent approvals, each year, somebody approves this. It'll be as a standard license approval where each department will make their recommendations separately. But for initial review and initial applications, we'll convene this site plan review committee and make a recommendation to the board. So inevitably, it's the board's responsibility to make the decision. But we had the meeting the other day, it went well. And, you know, we're excited to finally get this approved. This was actually a proposal that Liz Dennehy and I came up with in 2014. But because we actually put fifteen articles together that year of zoning, it just didn't make its way into the zoning that year. So we're finally, we're finally there, and I think it'll be great for downtown.
Great, thanks, thanks, Mike. And yeah, I would echo what Jim and Mike both said about how this is a direct offshoot of what passed a town meeting. And certainly, Mr. Carnes is an example of the downtown businesses being very interested in this and wanting to jump on it as soon as possible through this new program. So I think it was, Jim Johnson mentioned it, and Eva Kelly commented on it earlier today as well, really putting this in action quickly. So I would open it up here for the board to ask any further questions of Mr. Carnes or of Jim and Mike. Any further questions or comments, being that there is none? I would hear a motion?
Hey, Ben, I do have a quick comment.
Please.
The only issue that's come up, that somebody reached out to me today, I think they may have also reached out to Jim O'Neill, is just worry that there'll be entertainment going on when there's a church event activity. So I think it's important, and I know there was a little footnote in the application to just coordinate with the church right next door and make sure that they're not doing a baptism when you have somebody out doing music and that kind of thing. If you can coordinate, I think everybody would be happy, it'll be a great thing. So that was my only comment.
Yeah, and Ben, I would jump on that, I did get contacted as well and agree that we need to take that step. And so we're not talking about just, you know, church services that might be occurring in the morning on Sunday, but really thinking about any activities that are happening at the Epiphany Church where the entertainment might detract from, you know, whatever the activity is. So I think if, just get some close coordination with the church, and I suspect that'll be totally fine, just so that we don't end up with any interference there.
Yeah, great, thank you, Jim. And I think with any of these new endeavors that we try, as you said, it's very critical to have that coordination and communication. There's a lot of people that are worried about what ifs, but if people are talking to each other and working through the problems, then I think we'll be able to have some good things going on down there. So being that there's no further comment, oh, David?
Further comment, and just heads up to staff, I think, you know, if we need at some point to ever change these things and be more restrictive or put times on them or days on them, we certainly can revisit these without having to wait the whole year, I would think.
Right, right, right.
So I'll make a motion to approve the request of CRISP for weekday and Sunday entertainment license.
Second?
We have a motion, a second, being that there's no further discussion, we'll proceed with the roll call vote. David?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye, four zero zero, the motion passes.
Mr. Carnes, thank you again for being with us tonight, best of luck.
Thank you very much, gentlemen, appreciate it.
All right. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you, you too.
You too.
All right, Jim Johnson, town administrators update?
Sure, just a few items here.
Okay.
Pull it up. Okay, COVID update. At this time, we have three hundred and fifty-seven confirmed positive cases in Walpole, three hundred and forty-three cases have completed monitoring, with fourteen current cases. We're closely monitoring Walpole's status with the state. We are currently in the yellow zone, which is the, there's four different zones, it's white, green, yellow, and red, red's the worst one. Where we certainly hope that we don't get into the red, but based on the three-week look back, we think we're gonna be fine for this week. Next week could be a problem. If we were to get into the red zone, school and health officials need to do a three-week, collect three weeks' worth of data to see if we stay in that red zone and make decisions about schools. We got ahold of the letter that was recently sent to Norwood, so we're starting to prepare if we get into the red zone. And I did ask Melissa, is there anything specific that we can do as town officials? You know, is there clusters, fourteen out of a town of twenty-six thousand? You know, to me, isn't a lot, but I know everyone's cautious with this. Right now, there is no real clusters, it's scattered. There's no real patterns and everything, it's not like a group home or a large family or something like that that make up the fourteen. But we are really keeping a close eye on it, and want to make the board aware of that, just in case we do get into the red zone. And we'll work with Bridget and Melissa and Mike Frischa, school committee and everything, to make sure we keep these schools open as long as safely possible. Any questions? No? Moving on to town meeting. I think this past town meeting, a week and a half ago, went really well. I was pleased with the attendance, the manner in which everyone conducted themselves. I think the school department did a great job with the lunches for those who got it. I think our DPW and the school people that we work with did a great job organizing it. Pat did an excellent job. He was on top of the plan to lay everyone out, and I was just really pleased with it. We're prepared in the spring to run another one outside if necessary. I think it might be necessary, so we're acting, we're planning two locations right now. As far as the spring twenty-one town meeting, we've already started the budget process. Today, I sent out the budget directive memo to department heads, asking them to get it in at the end of November into the munis, into our systems. And we're gonna start a little bit early this year because I think we're gonna need the head start, because I think it's gonna be even more challenging than this past year has been. Because we're just, we don't know what's out there. And we gotta be prepared for a significant cut in state aid. And there's a lot of things Jody and myself are considering moving forward. And of course, I'd like a lot of input from your board, probably in December and January before I finalize my recommendation. As far as the spring town meeting warrant, I've already started that draft. We have fourteen articles, they're more or less placeholders for the most part. Eva and I did the calendar, we're probably gonna be looking at the board to open the warrant in November at some time and close it in mid to late January. With the fall town meeting, it really feels like a crunch timeframe. Spring, we have a lot more time, people can take their time getting in the articles for any citizens petitions or zoning bylaw changes that may come up. So we'll have plenty of time, and that's really about it for me, unless the board has any questions.
Great, great, thank you, Jim. Any comments or questions for Jim Johnson? Yeah, Jim O'Neill, please.
Hey, Jim, I just wanted to comment on those pictures that you sent, that I guess we're taking with the drone, of the one A fields. And particularly the nighttime ones that you sent, which really were spectacular. The two football fields, football, soccer, lacrosse fields, I should call them, with the artificial turf, the baseball field, looks like the grass is coming in nicely, with the softball field. The whole thing is coming together really, really well, and those pictures say a lot. I hope we're putting them out on the town website, and I don't know if we are or not, but I think it'd be a good idea to do that. They're great pictures.
Okay, I think recreation shared them out, but if not, I'll make sure it gets up there.
Great, thank you.
Great, thanks, Jim.
Okay.
Okay, so at this point in the meeting, the board is going to be removed to executive session. And then for the folks who are watching at home, after the executive session, we will return to open session to conclude the meeting with item seven under new business, which is a vote on the subject of executive session. So we will be going to executive session for purpose two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Chief John Carmichael, Jody Cuneo, and Elizabeth Daffy. And we will take a roll call vote to go to public session, excuse me, to go to executive session. Roll call vote, starting with David?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
And Ben, aye, four zero zero. We will now remove to executive session and then come back to open session to our vote. Thank you.